Okay. Welcome, everyone to the Atchison County Commission Meeting for Tuesday, August eighth. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We are currently waiting on Father John, who is scheduled to give our invocation this morning. Can we just give him about five minutes? Are you guys okay with that?
Okay.
And then. In the meantime, I'm sending, I just want to let you know, because Eric and I were at the fair and we received a suggestion from a constituent of having an electronic recycling every once in a while. And so I'm sending Stacy that, just so you guys know, like, I'm sending her the suggestion we received. Actually, for informational only, I'll put you that way.
You know, they intend two or three times it did electronics, but not every time.
Yeah, that's what this lady was like. You don't have to do it like constantly, but if you had an option, there's a need, so.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll let her know that.
And there was another complaint about the road closures just came through.
Oh, another one, okay.
You didn't know?
Yeah. There's no reply, so they plus.
I'm gonna get it in a second, I just.
Yeah, I can give it. Balance, you complaints, we just close the roads, we complaints, we don't fix the roads.
Mm-hmm. Well, that's the reason I'm thinking.
It's hard to find that balance.
Yeah. If there was one general announcement, I don't think that'd be a problem. I think it's the recurring.
Yeah. As long as the dispatch knows and emergency services all know, I think that's.
But I think the biggest. But then it's not quite that simple. It's never quite.
Well, the equipment stuff is super big hassle to cope.
Yeah.
Way out of your racket that.
I haven't gotten that one yet, Eric.
It actually said it came through yesterday, but it's.
Oh, did you only get one yesterday?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I got two yesterday.
Mine just came through.
That's bizarre.
I think your computers.
Yeah. Which is nerve wracking if you're not getting things.
Computer is possessed.
Do you ever shut it down? Does it need updates or anything? Okay, let me just look really quick. So sometimes.
Shut it down several times.
Yep, you're not. Usually there's a little orange dot right there if you need it. We still have another minute. So five and nine, if not us, Sister Connie had left the prayer for elected leadership that we can use.
I guess I hadn't put it too, because I'm gonna be crazy.
What's that? You might agree.
You surround us.
All right. Okay, so something must have came up possibly in Father John's scheduling, so I'm gonna use Sister Connie's prayer for elected leadership, if you guys would stand and join me in invocation. Oh, God, give us strong, wise, compassionate leaders. Send us leaders with truthful hearts and impassioned spirits who will stand for justice and freedom for all. Give us leaders who will unite with other leaders to bring about a kinder, more peaceful world. Leaders who will support their coworkers during times of challenge and change. Give us leaders who are servants of the people, listening, encouraging, caring for all races, creeds, and cultures, welcoming those seeking asylum, providing a safe place for all to thrive. Amen. Okay, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Sister Connie stole it? Yes.
Yeah. Is there any way I can get a copy of that?
Absolutely, I have extras.
Oh, good. Thank you so much. She taught me in grade school.
Oh, she gets. Yes, I have extras, so I will get you one.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you bet. All right, public comment. Seeing none, approval of minutes of last mission meeting?
No.
Yeah.
Because I don't.
Yep.
It was a Thursday and I wasn't trying to bust.
Yep. So we will do that next week. Commissioner comments.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reeves.
We got everything right now?
Commissioner.
I just want to congratulate the Atchison County Sheriff Board on a very successful, we had a successful fair again this year. We had pleasure walking through, Commissioner Quinn and I walking through the parade handing out candy. I thought there was an excellent crowd for the parade, so I know how much work that is and all the work that the foresters have put into it, so I just, very good.
Yes, I would echo that. Thanks for all the hard work and your cleanup and your preparation. I thought it was awesome. It was great. Fun event, so. All right, new business. Bria Lorenz, District Court Clerk with the Budget Review. Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Okay, thanks for joining us again. All right, guys have any questions for Bria? I have a couple of questions. Okay, thank you for responding to our direction on lowering down. I appreciate your willingness to work with us. A couple of questions, I know you did reduce a bit and we don't want to hinder the progress that you're doing, so I wanted to visit with you a little bit. I know that your increase was kind of based on the computers that you wanted to update. Are you doing that in phases now because of the direction?
Um, yes.
Okay, and do you feel like phases is a positive for you and the fact that then they won't all come do if you're doing the rotation plan? Or do you feel like you should have them?
The three main computers that were on the very edge, we actually got those upgraded. We still have four computers that need to be upgraded. And then I found out with the lightning, we need to upgrade the computer in the small courtroom for the recording system. Okay, so that's in addition to needing, so five computers total.
And is the seven gonna be able to do five?
Um.
Seven thousand?
I don't think so.
Okay.
So we're. Sure, it should cover the one.
Yes. Hopefully.
So does the seven take care of six or four?
The four.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the other question I had is I noticed your capital outlay was zero. And we had done previously a tour with you in your office about some alterations you wanted to make for efficiencies with your staff. I didn't know if you were planning on doing any in the capital before that or just kind of waiting to hear from us. One of the things we did do was we allocated our ARPA funding and we had a hundred and one thousand five twenty-three seventy-five that we put toward courthouse renovations with like a to be continued conversation. Brian is going to come this afternoon too, so we can visit with him, because he's wrapping up the treasurer's office and appraiser, but beyond that, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I believe that was pretty much a wrap, because the clerk decided she was fine. So then.
Sherry, can you trace it? She's heard her capital outlay to help.
Yeah, so Sherry had a little left over from hers and she would like to dedicate that to your projects, but also I know that won't cover your project, so just didn't know if we wanted to. I just wanted to bring that up, because there was no capital in here, so then you're kind of hoping that or betting that we will create use some based on the ARPA. So I think it's very worthwhile to have that discussion, so you know what to expect of, you know.
I guess I was just kind of waiting on the direction of the county commissioners, because I wasn't for sure if it would be a yay or a nay. Although I do think that the upgrades would have to be done in phases. Absolutely, yeah. My first main concern would probably be the clerk's office. I would like all of the girls to be together under one, you know, under one office instead of separation. I've kind of talked to Brian about it a little bit. He said he's kind of been working behind the scenes on getting some ideas, so and I'll leave it up to him, because I am not, not very good at that. So, and then obviously, the bulletproof glass is the next thing that I would like to get to as well for the girls, so, okay.
So maybe.
The glass that goes from into the hall where the.
The sliding.
I was thinking that.
It's not bulletproof, it is shatterproof. It would, so if somebody hits it, it won't, shards of glass won't go all over the clerks. It's not bulletproof.
It's the layered glasses.
Yeah.
Okay. I thought that had been changed and I thought that was bulletproof.
So I can kind of ask Brian to on his thoughts.
Then another thing is the key fobs. I do know Judge Fontag is still wanting that. So I don't know where that is at in the process, but that was another thing.
Well, and that was something we wanted to do courthouse wide, like, so we'll ask him on that too, because I would like an update on that, because I know other offices want that very, very much, but.
Yeah, and I know he's even working with the key fobs for the treasurer's office, which is about done for the the main entry door, so. I mean, I think that's something that wouldn't need, that could be probably done early and utilize that, because I think they were gonna put a door at the head of the stairs, so to, and then keep people out of the offices of the judge's office space. So I think that one would be a big get that could be done anytime.
Right.
And I think they were talking with Brian, you handle that more, Wes would, and there was some discussion, they gone, so I'm not sure if Wes is gonna coordinate it, Brian, so.
Well, then Tom Weiser mentioned the sheriff too, so I think all three of them need to figure out what the best scenario is and get it.
Yeah, I think.
Getting.
I think we have started with Brian, because he has to, in that case, even find a door and, you know, install a door, it's not just putting a fob system on a current door, so. I think that would probably have to start with Brian, get that on there, and then he will know when it comes time to, you know, coordinate with the other ones, so I think he would be able to do that.
Speaking of Tom Weiser, because he was there during Shelley's walkthrough too, and we gotta remember that we have to take her into account when we're talking about this ARPA allocation, but I guess for me, and I know I'm only one of three, but giving you direction of what our plans are with that or within the courthouse, I think it'd be good for us to have some some idea from Brian on costs of what you and what she wants to do, that is the ARPA going to be able to do that? And I know you talked about phases, which I appreciate that, but like, can we get phase one going and what does that look like? Because, again, with no capital in your budget, you're gonna be sitting there for another year, so just so we have that communication, conversation and can get you something going, so.
Might be a two or three year project by the time you shuffle people and move things and, you know, I mean, it's.
Yeah, and we hate, we hate to do something that has to be totally dismantled the next year to start, so, and again, Brian will be the one.
Yep.
But I think some of those things are kind of low hanging fruit, and I think you, you like the door and the fob, and the fob systems and that, which could be done pretty quickly and offer a lot of security.
I'm projecting perfect. Wes said IT is working with maintenance on the key fobs.
Okay.
It shouted as.
Her.
Trying to get you.
Okay.
Security question, so we probably should, I have a question about that though, that Mr. Weiser brought up, so. Um, okay. Well, do you guys have questions for Bria on her budget? I asked mine, so thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, it's kind of hard to plan your jury transcript costs, I guess, so you go, you got enough in there, it's.
Um, yes, and we've been very fortunate this year not to have a jury trial. Like, I believe it's already August, we haven't had one this year. So we're just pretty fortunate in that aspect, but yeah, it's, it's hard to tell from year to year, so.
I'm sorry, I thought of one more question. On the microfilming, does twenty-three hundred accomplish what you wanted to with, is that where you're scanning all of your?
No, so that is the storage, the yearly storage rental fee that we have with underground vaults and storage in Hutchinson.
Okay.
That's what that's for. From my understanding, after talking with Wes, I thought he was going to include the big scanning project in his budget.
That's right.
It was like, I'm sure we'll see a trash.
Something like that.
Yeah, maybe brand or something like that. Otherwise, I haven't through any other questions really. Maybe they're just getting a remodeling, updating kind of planned, good going.
Yes, I think the, my girls would be very appreciative of that, and we are running out of space. You know, we have boxes sitting in the middle of our office, because we are trying to get rid of work files and we're paperless now, which does help, but we lost a vault upstairs at the county attorney's office. They, they took over, which is fine, but I'd just like to clean up and get more organized, so.
Those that start scanning documents and start creating space.
And so that's budgeted, who will man that project? Is it the girls in your office?
Um, so from what I understood from Wes, a company would come in and scan everything, so. In the meantime, if we have downtime, the girls do back scan cases, just so we can get them out of there.
And from, I think that historically, there was a question of when you have an outside outfit come in and do that. And this is court records and things, or that you would almost need someone from our side to be monitoring them to make sure that things aren't being like transferred out or carried out or because of the privacy issues on it, so that might be something that really needs to be looked at, what, what level of scrutiny needs to happen when that's being scanned.
And there are some records that we absolutely cannot get rid of, so we do have to keep some as well.
Yeah.
I'm watching the emergency manager, I've been waiting for you.
So, how it works, it's not in next budget. We need to get it into, into the first budget. So.
We need.
Yeah, we need to go to the fourth budget, and how it works, we'll do, we typically use Rachel, which is who's done all of our scanning projects. They'll come in, look at what we have, give us a price estimate on what it takes to do it. She has way more than what we will spend this year to get done, then we will box it up and they will come get it. They'll take it to their secret facility. Potentially, if it's a secure facility, they'll scan everything they can. We cannot send crumbling documents, because they'll crumble before they scan. So if it's old enough to where it's crumbling, we're just gonna have to keep it, but if it's not that old, then they'll do it, but they'll return it to us, then we can verify, we can spot check with the images that they give us with what we sent them, and we can spot check, which we've never had a problem to where they didn't get everything we sent so far, and I mean, I did it for nine years of scanning, and then after that, then we can pay to have it shredded somewhere, which we probably should do with yours, that, everything else we send out to achievement services, but with with your documents.
Privacy.
Yeah.
Issues.
Yeah, sure, it's got a secure way of doing that, I think, which the county uses per shred and I can't remember the other company that we use.
I've seen shredded in Dan.
Yeah, so.
That's great.
So what would the, what would that figure need to be?
So when I was doing it, for all the other offices, we did sixty-five thousand a year, which is a huge chunk money, but that did a very large amount, I mean, that did two rider trucks worth of documents. Then, we'll have to see what it does now, and you can always shrink that number, it can be a multi-year project. Yes, I kind of like.
Thirty or forty.
Yeah. But I mean, as, as much as, as, as the courts have, I mean, I think it's it used to be eleven rooms full of documents that we have, we've shrunk that some, and then there's also some down below the health department.
Yes, there's quite a few.
Which we need, I mean, we emptied that out of all documents in the past, because we've had several floods down there and it ruined everything, so. That would be why I'm starting, is getting those documents out of the basement of the health department. Because that should be ruined at any time.
It is kind of an inconvenience to have to run down if somebody, you know, comes up for genealogy or something, so.
But step one would be, they can come in to the health department and the courthouse, assess it and tell us, here's how much for all. And then from that, we can determine if we want to phase it out or not, but like, having that information will be awesome, so you would coordinate that and get that. I would love to see that done.
That's not gonna be a super fast.
We'll have to come up with a, a, a figure now, because it's not, we're not gonna have time to plug that in.
Longer than you're gonna have the budget wise. Okay, so this first year, you're gonna have to say forty grand or whatever, whatever dollar amount permission comes along. And then we'll, we'll fit into that. And then, but it'll be a multi-year, depending on what document she's able to scan, it'll be a multi-year.
I was like, the rider truck, well, we said the previous time it was sixty-five.
Rider.
As I'm saying, it's forty grants, nowadays it's probably another truck full, how they age up, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, as prices have increased, wages have increased.
Yeah, so.
Who's last year used them?
Last time. And I mean, they do this nationwide, so they have big scanning facilities, so they can scan whatever, and will she will be the point when it comes on this, and they will say, how do you want your documents? How do you want them labeled? How do you want them? And then we'll store them on servers, but they will lay it out, whatever makes it easiest with the courts, be able to find those when they're digital.
Formatted and.
Yeah. Yeah, and they scan the whole folder, so they scan the folder itself, because a lot of time it's writing on the backside of the, inside of the folder, they scan folder also.
That's good to know. It's just awesome, they take it off.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Like, okay, let me take the truck fulls out of here and do it.
They'll do it onsite, but it's far more expensive onsite. We don't have the room anymore?
No.
No.
Then you'll know what you're working with on space when you can tote it on out. So.
So when they return the documents, they just sort of have to go right back into the courthouse, or it could be, we can stage them somewhere, we just stage somewhere else, hey, I'm just trying to keep it simple as.
Well, and I have to get a court order from the chief judge to destroy the documents, so. I have to do that as well, or we can officially shred them and burn them or whatever.
So yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't carry them back up three flights of stairs, let's stage them somewhere.
That order.
Yeah, since we get them back and get an order from the chief judge.
Yeah. And we typically, in the past, have used inmates to help us carry those documents out, because it is our responsibility to carry the documents to the court, so. Jack's always been great to get inmates to help us and get them loaded. And then, for some reason, while those documents are gone, and something happens and you need some of those documents, every box has to have a code on it, and you say, hey, I need this document out of this box, and they get it and scan it, so you can get it back to you within less than an hour typically.
Oh, wow.
How long is this process take? But they all allows it to be gone, huh?
About two months.
Depending on how.
It is.
Okay, sure.
So, and then they, besides scanning us, and they have, they have people to go through every document to make sure it's readable, so people say, is the page turned sideways? We don't have any of that, they do quality control, everything is excellent, and they'll bring it back to us on a hard drive, which then we load on to on to your file share, we'll set up a new archive, share views as scanned archive documents, and that's backed up by times, so if anything would ever happen, we have backups.
Okay. Question on that, we just purchased new storage space for the attorney's project. Are we gonna need additional storage space for this project?
So we, depending on how much she sends, that's possibly, we also just verified for the server, because it was tried during the new storm, which also took up more storage, so, which we didn't plan on, but without, so, yeah, I mean, there will be stored. As we do everything more and more electronic, there's going to be storage increases at expense.
Budget purposes, what do you guys think, or is it number?
Twenty-five thousand? For your project.
Well, I kind of. I mean, we can put whatever buffer in there, but there's other, like, we can talk about the ATC, I mean, there's other funds we could talk about, I just, it'd be nice to know what. Regardless, you're at twenty-five, what are you thinking?
I don't know, I'm just, you're making a three-year project and figure it's gonna cost.
So in the past, just speaking from in the past, she would have been a two, or courts would have been a two to three-year project, that's fifty-five thousand each year, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Sixty-five.
That's. This is there way more than any other office was, even, even an office that had a large, large, larger.
Seventies, they don't need to be kept, I mean, there's seventies, they're actually, what's the rules on that? I don't know that it's certain.
We are, there are requirements that we do have to keep some documents, and I mean, we have the coal vault downstairs in the basement. Some of those are crumbling, so I know they can't be going, but yeah, we do, there's, we have to keep. I'm not sure exactly which ones, I have to read this that.
Thirty-year or forty-year, I've been in prison, they got records.
I'm sure the apartment depression or towards have a, has a.
A list. Supreme Court Rule one oh eight does have a list.
Yeah.
Bring that.
I was curious, I've obviously have like old phone bills and invoices from. Oh, I mean, I wouldn't.
Those are a little easier.
You never know which one's fine. Yeah. Right. They shouldn't have any of that, and if they do, we can shred it already, because the HR department, well, sorry, accounts payable should have all that for the last seven years.
So just preliminary, my brain is more at a sixty-five being one year, like, so there's a rhyme, because this is a need, and especially after talking about the basement of the health department versus a want and, and keeping, you know, an end inside of if it's gonna be two or three years, it's this amount, you know. So that's kind of where I'm at, but again, until we look at the whole budget all over together, but I would like, I appreciate that estimate to know, like, one year.
There's two sides, but it's one is talking about the scanning storage, so the thing is, we're going to gain space back, which we're challenging space in the courthouse, so talking about remodeling and everything, let's not get the health department, and I might say, look at areas that would benefit us to get cleaned out.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
You know, maybe.
We want to do renovation.
Yeah. Well, or, yeah, I don't know if there's anywhere that we could utilize the inmates and put them all in one spot. So when Rico came, they could say, okay, this is what we have, you know, and then they're not flood possible in the basement, they're not. Flood, uh, possible in the basement, they're not three floors up, they're, they're in a, which maybe we can have that discussion later, but.
I'd be okay with sixty-five right now, and then as we finalize the budget, we said we'll build fifty a year or something, we'll just make a change.
Well, and that's where I can't commit yet until we see the whole thing, but I would like that one year, at least to say, okay, here's a year, like, let's make some progress and. Get some, get some things.
Three-year, planted in three years, things loosen up and. In pretty good shape.
So, that's just my initial thoughts. Thank you.
Thanks, Wes.
Like, oh, welcome, Father Don, thank you for joining us this morning.
Well, I apologize for being late, I kind of. I didn't know if you'd already made up a prayer, or.
We, we did do one.
You did do one.
Well, we would appreciate another one, so, if you guys would join me and let Father Don.
Absolutely.
President Vocation, we appreciate you for coming.
Well, you're welcome, I'm sorry to play. The Lord be with. Heavenly Father, we thank you that you are a God, open and foresee above. And when we're not on time, you know, you can still bless us, we ask you to make us instruments of peace. Where there is hatred, there is sorrow, where there is injury, pardon, where there is discord, you. There is doubt, faith, where there is despair, hope, where there is darkness, light, and where there is sadness, joy. Grant that we may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For the same giving that we receive, it is a pardon that we are pardoned, and it isn't done.
Oh, no, yeah.
I didn't know if I should borrow a gin or not.
You should, always. Thank you so much. Okay, uh, next on the agenda, um, Eric. You are working on a letter of support for Northeast.
Yes, and Pat is gonna have that, so can we skip over that and come back to that?
Yes, sir. Um, I have an updated letter, um, that I would look for a motion to approve. Um, this is the same letter that we had sent historically on behalf of, uh. Lindsay, who's getting her administrator license at Senior Village, um, and we have to do this ever so often with updated dates. It just is making them aware that the county currently owns Ashiston Senior Village with a licensed administrator. Uh, David Mercier is serving as that. Okay, we need a, we need to change this letter, sorry. So we're gonna table this and make a couple of updates, because there's a line in here that says that David is, uh. His time is coming to an end this Thursday, so we need to make a couple more updates on that before we. Yes, we'll do that, um, okay, so now we are thirty minutes ahead, so Brian's not quite here yet. So, we will just.
While Priya was. I was kind of doing some digging and just grants, possibly for this type of thing, and. City of Kansas just had one for digitization of records that ended June fifteen. So. Maybe we can find a different one, or keep hoping that maybe they'll have another one for twenty-five.
Thank you.
I'll keep looking, um, but also, like you've mentioned, there is L A T C F funds.
Yes.
A hundred thousand dollars that we have. They can also supplement that scanning.
Yeah. I think, yes, I appreciate that, I just think for, for me, more information, and I think once we get with Brian and have some estimates on. Renovations, scanning estimates, like, all those things, then it'll be easier to allocate funds efficiently. To make sure we're making an impact, and I like what you had said. Instead of, I mean, there's been in the basement of the health department, like, why wouldn't we want more space in the courthouse, that's a very good perspective, and maybe we should. You know, if we can move them to one central location and open all those spaces.
Well, if there are spaces that are needing to be cleared for renovation, which we want to start, right, that's where we need. Those are the records that we need to move for. Secure location to this.
Absolutely.
Mark, what's the, please explain the L A T C F.
Yeah, so it is the local assistance and tribal physical recovery funds, um. So, Ashiston County, it's based on a formula that the federal government had, and every county in the state of Kansas. Was eligible for some sort of funding, depending on the equations. Uh, and we got a hundred thousand dollar payment, um, two fifty thousand dollar sections. Each one last year and one this year, um, and basically we have the. It's kind of like ARCA money, where you, there is no discretion, except you can't use it for lobbying for any reason. But it's, uh, we just do some reporting on it, um, to show what we've used it for, but there's no real. Discretion on where it can and can't go, except for lobbying.
Might be a good use of some of that money.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
The same thing, time limit to spend it by.
There's not, there's no time limit at this time.
Yeah, that would be real helpful, because it's, it's kind of a one-time expense, but we can spread, and we can do a hundred grand.
Yeah, well, and that's what I was thinking, but again, when we get more info, then we can make, I just didn't feel like we have that right now to.
Should we hold off putting in her budget then until, how do you want to do that?
Well, but with Wes's estimate, two to three-year project, both of those, I mean.
Yeah, so just, we just have to keep in mind that the R and R notices. Will be sent out that have what our mill levy is capped out.
Right.
It also has went to the paper of what it's capped out, and if you increase, maybe. One budget that amount, you might have to decrease another budget that amount, so we don't go.
May I ask a question on that, because initially I thought we were sending out the notices on the. Initial.
That's correct.
And we've came down a lot.
That's correct, however. I did some, we haven't had time to visit, but we did a lot of, I did a lot of thinking. And I went through past conversations, and I stumbled upon one that you and I had about. The N R P plan, not to forget it. So after plugging those numbers in, we are back up to sixty-one mills. There are two mills was for the N R P, we have to generate two mills worth of taxes to cover that plan. So it's.
I hadn't got plugged into it.
Have had, have we not done that? Quickly, and, and you have to have the whole workbook complete, every budget plugged in before you can do the N R P. So then, once you plug in those initial adblocker monies, that offsets. And increases what you need to levy to cover what you're producing in taxes for people on the N R P.
I know we're currently meeting with department heads. To get clarity, but I received some constructive criticism on the job that I'm. Doing as a commissioner, when it comes to asking questions to the nonprofits that ask for appropriations. That maybe we should be looking more at, asking more questions of them, um, and so I just want to say that out loud, because. I mean, I'm still learning what questions to ask and whatnot, but a- apparently, there's a lot of funding out there that. Maybe we're not aware of, of, okay, we're giving you tax dollars, now what are you generating for the county? For the tax dollars you're given, I guess, and, and just being mindful of, of all the. Different people we give to, so I just, it was recent feedback, and I'm just like, I just want to share that, because. They are a large chunk of our budget, um, like, five hundred.
Six hundred and twenty-four thousand.
Yeah, six hundred and twenty-four thousand, um, is appropriations and nonprofits, so, um, just, just putting it out there. When we're, when we're all together, that, I mean. And I. Each one's so different, that you like, you try to ask the questions, you know, and I know Pat keeps us, and basically, most of them are all discretionary. Um, so. But again, that's just something I wanted, when we're talking about mill levies and. R and Rs and six hundred and some thousand to. And also appreciative of the foundation and the United Way, and all these folks that are, you know, doing the days to support them, um.
I know, but I had a question, because we talked about the Fair Flyer, and then I said something about having the. Uh, extension listed, and you said, well, they have their own mill.
They do have their own.
So, how is that, do they have their own mill levy, but then that is part of the greater mill levy when we express it?
No, so like, when they, when the extension council comes to ask for their appropriation, whatever they're asking for generates their own tax. So it's part of your appropriations, but it's a different. Like on that sheet that kind of you had seen earlier, um, it's broken down separately.
So I guess when I see that, that the county is fifty-two mills, does that include that, the extensions?
It depends on.
Two mills?
How you talk about the county, so if you're just talking about the county general mill levy, no, it's not part of that, but if you're talking about the whole county, county as a whole. Like the sixty-two that we're talking, that is included in that.
Okay.
But the county general is like fifty-five or fifty-eight or whatever, sixty, it's sixty.
But the overall is what we need to be talking about.
Yes, because you approved the budget hearing overall, you don't approve a budget hearing per mill levy, you do it overall.
So that's what, you know, I got, looking at that, it's like, well, since that's expressed as their own mill levy, I didn't know whether, how that was included. Get off of that, because that's not sustainable.
Well, that's, I think that's one of the things for me, after getting that feedback and trying to think through it, is like, okay, we're having these meetings. With our department heads. To talk about what they need to operate. From the, from the nonprofits and appropriations, they're operating, and we're just assisting with that, so. I'd have to review them individually, like. It wouldn't be detrimental, you know what I mean, like, because it would be detrimental if we cut half of our budget, he couldn't operate, right?
Right.
Of understanding that, of, of the list of appropriations, like.
Right.
And really, the only one that sticks out was Northeast Kansas area aging on aging. That came and said, here, you're giving me twenty-five thou, twenty-five hundred dollars, and I'm coming back to your community with fifty thousand here, sixty over here, like. That's a bang for your buck, like, that's a no-brainer of tax dollars working for, for the. For the, yeah, for the greater good, I just.
They get twenty-six, thirty-seven.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
So, I don't know.
More funding sources.
I don't know, I'm just.
Whereas maybe some of the other ones that have a higher number that they're asking for.
And I'm thinking that we had to have, I think, in that instance, they had to have buy-in. From each county, and so we were obligated to pay the twenty-six hundred dollars, but then that's what, because. It is a little bit like we have the Home for the Age, it's like, we, we have Senior Village, we have to have that fund. There, because of all of the past, uh, I don't know if a statute or driven, or if it's contract driven or whatever, we need to. Fund that fund, a, a minimal.
Like, kind of like an in-good faith type of thing.
Like a match, yeah, yeah.
But I mean, that's an easy one, to, to defend to taxpayers of like, hey, we're giving this tax dollars, but it's coming back in full circle here, here and here. To our county. And, I mean, I don't know if there's any, you serve on the board, if there's any more room for that organization for. Project concern, because I know they give right now, that we could even out what, like, if they had any more, or how they allocate theirs.
Well, they're, it's almost like they're the conduit that. They get all of their funding from the Old Americans Act, and all this program ship, and the, uh. It's just, there's tons of those programs that they provide, and so it's like, they're the, the overarching. Uh, organization that helps, it's like seven counties or, or more here in Northeast Kansas, get those funds. So. It, it's, and each county's set up a little bit different, uh, some counties, they're directly under. All their meal programs and everything are directly under American Area A G T on Aging. And here, we've got Project Concern, which is its own entity, but it's still connected. So, there's a little bit differences in analysis.
She, she mentioned, and I can't remember right off the top of my head when she was here, but that was one, Amber Wall was one, and, and Project Concern was one that they helped. And I just didn't know. If there's any room for additional help to where we could lower, like, to where it wouldn't hurt Project Concern, I guess, is what I'm saying, but. I don't know. Still trying to. You guys have any thoughts on how we're gonna?
Some appropriations right now, thinking through, thinking through.
Yes, we're at sixty-one point five four seven, that's what has sent to the paper and the R and R notices.
So, that's an R P plan, though, this.
So, um, the N R P plan is what. Businesses, commercial and or residential homes, can, they can apply to be part of this plan to have their taxes. Due to building or, I don't, Conny can probably say a bunch better, but, um, or Pat, but. They get on the plan, it reduces their taxes to, it's an incentive to build there or.
Sure, seven to ten-year payback.
And in order to. Recoup what has been reduced, um, you then plug in the, the adblocker taxes of what you're saying you're going to levy. Into this N R P structure over here, then it increases the taxes that you're saying you're going to levy. By the offset of the N R P.
Okay, so.
Parcels.
Okay, just offset the, it's gonna be rebate.
So we have, I mean. To the consumer, we're reducing taxes for their parcel, however, we still have to fund it. So it's still increased in the back.
For, for others.
Correct.
For the ones that aren't participating.
No, that's interesting.
Goes up over time, it works.
It's built back up.
Yeah, because then it. People, people roll off. I've been on. It's a economic development tool to help spur growth.
No, yeah.
And, and then, yeah, but it costs, yeah, uh, that's a. Considered as a bill, because it takes away the initial, some of the initial costs, your years.
The unfortunate part is we have to have. Everything filled out in here first, and budgeted first, in order to calculate the N R P. Because we have to know the amount of adblocker taxes, where we need to generate for the budgets. Then it goes in and, and takes care of all of this algorithm equation in all of this, to give us how much we need to learn. So I can kind of say, yeah, we need fourteen million dollars, and plug it in, but it's not gonna be real. Spot on until we get it in there.
Good question, so when we had the appropriations come last year, we, I made a, a question for all of them, if they're part of the foundation. Based on our budget calendar. The foundation's having their match day, right, so like, could we do some type of like. I don't know, in my brain, it sounds better than what it could be in reality, but like, if the, if the people understand. The struggles we're facing on, on here, it's like, maybe they would be more willing to support their organization during match day. That way versus.
Through taxes.
Through taxes, I don't know, I'm just, have the community show up to support these organizations that the county has given to for so many years. To help, like, I, I don't know, I, and I don't know how you get that message out, but I'm just trying to think how everybody wins without hurting.
Well, that's up to the organization to find the money, fund the donors.
I know.
Raise the value, appreciate donating. Uh, I guess you look at it like, we, we slowly reduce these, they're going to work harder to find those people.
And they will.
At the end of the day, it's worth so much money in your pockets and.
I know.
It helps many causes and.
Yeah, no, I.
Nobody's walking around with it. Nobody's walking around with a few thousand land grants to donate.
No, yeah.
So it's challenge.
It is a challenge.
I do think most of these groups are pretty good about trying to. Raise your body, fundraise, be frugal with their money and provides for good services, so. Then it's our decision whether to continue to fund them or not, or maybe reduce them a little bit, or. Or raise it, whatever, decide. And that's where my. Uh, position has been not to raise them, but to at least hold them steady, I think that. Uh, there. They are necessary and vital, uh, to fund, but at the same time, if, if. The incentive for them to look for other avenues of funding, if, if it's just given. Via us through the county, they're not going to. Need to, to look elsewhere, so my thing was to kind of hold them steady, and as the need grows, they will start. Looking elsewhere, so that's kind of my theory on, on how we. Correct term is to encourage them to, uh. Uh, look elsewhere or apply for grants and that sort of thing. Because they, they both. On a like fair. You know, they're, it's just a once-a-year thing, or they don't, it is kind of, I think, hard for them to. Meet as a group to apply for and look for grants. I mean, they're almost need an advocate or some other person that would do that. Because it's so loose and it, on a, on a, for a project that happens once a year versus. Uh, a- another thing that they've, they've got, uh. They're, they're daily, you know, they're, it, it's more like a regular, uh, job, I'll take a soil conservation, you know, there, there's the employees there. Daily, you know, they've got their board that meets regularly, so I think that that would be easier for them to. To look for that funding than say a fair board, but that's just my opinion.
Uh, Pat, on the letter, sorry, on the letter for Senior Village. We just need to make a couple. Additional tweaks, because the last one we had, uh, Mr. Mercier's last day being Thursday, so just. The wording a little bit differently. Brian will be here in about seven minutes. Did you guys get an email about? Kansas law to manage from Jay Hall at all.
I haven't seen.
It came to my commission list, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah, a legislator has asked if Kansas counties feel that they have appropriate policy options under current Kansas law to manage. Any issues related to short-term rentals like Airbnb, VRBO, et cetera. Does the state need to do anything on this issue to increase local authority? Please respond and let me know.
I didn't respond. I don't, I don't see any, just to get into that, there's already. We have. City has a bed tax, so we just kind of have a bed tax. Okay, I mean, dollar apply would be. Price, price to handful of their views, that's, that's limits, I mean, price not.
Okay, the only person that had responded was Wabung C. And.
Oh, I had several online.
They have, they already have things in place in their Lake Wabung C Improvement District, so.
The ones that responded online were all kind of like, why would, they weren't, no one was excited about it.
Okay, so a good response was, we should be fine, like.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to get him something from Axon County, but I was wanting to talk to you guys first. All right, I'm just gonna CC you guys in for informational only, so you can see that I did actually respond to him. Really? Yeah, I only have one, and that's why I was like, hmm, I'll wait and ask you guys.
And I had not gotten anything from him.
Okay. Do very many people use District Two? Lesser, like Mission Loser?
Very seldom seen, you know, so that came via your list server. I have a little bit tragic on it, not very much. It'll seem like it'll go for a long time, and then finally there will be a subject comes up that sparks.
Everybody.
Something, and then it goes blank all the time.
Actually, I have a question, Pat. Uh, I was hoping. To ask Michelle, but you'll probably know the answer to this. I got an email asking. How a constituent can access expenditures in their township. Um, they looked it up online and they saw the budgets on the county website. But the last one posted was from twenty-twenty-one. Um, and they were wondering of like having access to receipts on like Pauling Rock. Um, and they were, were wanting to know how to do that now. My brain immediately went to what we just worked on walnut, where you have totes of all of that. And then the next, next is Kansas Open Records Request, so. How does all of that work with a township?
Well, uh. Michelle and I also, after that, had a bit of a discussion about townships. And, um. We came to a couple of conclusions. One is that I think every township would benefit if we have scanner. So that documents could be shared even among themselves, because that appears to be a problem that comes up a lot. And, and the other is that, uh, and I'll, I'll take responsibility for it, I think that, uh. That we, as the county, have been a little too lax on. The townships, there is a requirement that they file an annual report with the Board of County Commissioners. Uh, we could do more to get those publicized, get those on your agenda. So that those records that would be part of our agenda packets and would be. Available for people to find if they search online for them, research on our website for them. Um, so we, we, we both agree that that's something we ought to do. We, we haven't done, tho- those comments we did at the year, so. If the question is how do we get the past ones there, well, we could have reports, and I guess we could get them scanned and. Uh, get them on the website. Moving forward, I think we should, um, make sure that they're on your agenda. To review those reports every year as part of that, they go out with the packets, the, uh, the agenda packets. And would be available. Uh, I don't know the exact amount of. Uh, you know, asking to look at the receipts for every one of the. Every one of the rock, that, that might be a little much, uh, but. Perhaps it's, I, I, I don't know how big I would make that. How cumbersome that would make it to a few, certainly, uh. There ought to be enough there that somebody could get a fair picture and like. Providing us. Do the townships have a requirement to be audited? They service their own auditing board, because they're, they're so small.
Right.
So they don't have outside audit time, they service their own audit board, uh, each fall, and. The results of that. Audit, I think, would go a long ways with me answering questions of people in the townships. And we do give a report. Each year, and Joe also gets some report on the work that they've done on roads.
Okay, right.
And do that. Yeah, some of those are. Well, that, the report on the working roads is more, uh, statistical, okay. But, yeah, we could be doing more.
So if the constituent did want that information, did they go to clerk's office and request a Kansas open record on a township, or they go to the township trustee?
It depends on what they want to see.
Okay.
If they want to see the last name and the report. That's a report they could go, that's a request that could go to the county clerk.
Okay.
If they want to see something other than that, like the current bills or last month's bills or something like that. That would go to the township, they could go to any of the. Board members, it doesn't necessarily have to be to the trustee.
Okay.
So when you make a request like that, does that have to? Is there a form or is there like something in writing that you, or do you, can you just call up the township and say, I requested? They do have to be in writing. Uh, we have a form on our website that can be used, and they're pretty easy to find, you can Google them. The current county office also has some of those forms. Uh, and sometimes, well, people don't request records so much as they request answer, answers to questions. So, you know, how much did the county, how much did the township spend on gasoline last year, that's. I don't think there's a record that would show that. So that would. But to answer the question, they do need to be in writing. Got to be something more than a phone call. There's, there are some limited reasons why a township would be required to produce. Documents, but it's hard for me to imagine with less like that. Inceptions.
Perfect. Thank you, yeah, thank you for that answer. All right, so Brian may have gotten held up because it's eleven oh two, um, so we're gonna. Move forward if you're good.
Everything, but the executive session until it gets here.
Okay.
So.
So, yeah, let's go with.
We also do the other executive session.
Yep. All right, so we're gonna move forward to the eleven-thirty agenda item. Joe Snyder, Roden Bridge Superintendent is here to discuss fall patching and bridges on Phillips and Hamilton with us.
On fall patching, uh. If you guys got any more report I sent to you. Peppercorn, and I went through, or Emily and I went through, we measured all these. Different roads and the total quantity, unit price, and then what? Peppercorn's estimate was a hundred eighty-five thousand, one hundred eleven fifty cents. He also, for his services, would be twenty-two thousand dollars for a hundred. Uh, Mark and I met, he went over my figures, and we have the ability to do this. And also I'm probably going to increase it a little bit. Uh, on the way to the landfill Friday, there's two or three spots on the O show that need attention right away. And, uh, also want to talk to you about doing some on. Parts of Ottawa where it's bad, but, um, we have the money to, to do this right now. And I'll have to talk to Gabe, he's on vacation this week, because his fee may go up, there's more. But I just wanted to bring this to you guys and show you what it was and explain that we're trying to get it ready for next year. And some of it's, you know, things and attention is needed, the landfill on a surprise Friday. Uh, there was a spot there that's really. Really needs some help, it hasn't fell apart yet, but it's, it's sinking, it's rutting, it's probably up in the middle, probably that far.
No mind.
So, that was out there yesterday, and there's something three or four spots on that road, we'd like to get something done to. But just wanted to bring that up and see if you guys were on board. Uh, then he would put it out there and do everything like he's done before. And it's right there in the. Any document.
You're ready to do, do all three, uh, services.
Yes, I think so. I mean, if you guys don't want to, I mean, the. The inspection documentation, if you don't want to do that, we don't have to, but the other two are really. Put strongly, or should we do, but with everything the way it's worked. Uh, I don't see a problem with any of it.
Well, I'm wondering if we don't need that, I mean, this is really to get things ready for further work.
Yes.
Road, and so, you know, if they do this, then the next contractor is done. I mean, I'm thinking that's makes sense.
Well, I think it does, but it's, it's that.
I'm on board.
Yeah.
It's, it's that money, you know, so. Uh, but like I said, I want to go and I will get the rest of these, because we're gonna have to do something on the bad spots on Ottawa and, and the Osborn. We have to, I feel like, so if we can include those and I can still make that work. Uh, I would like to do that. So when he gets back, I'll send his information to him and hopefully Thursday. We can go measure the rest of them, we measured some of them yesterday afternoon and get the rest of them, where we've been pretty good shape. So that is that, uh, the bridges, so I talked, reached out to. Husker Steele, just to get some information, he's gonna come Thursday, he'll look at it, and we'll just have. Had a quote of what they would, he would think that would cost. On the two bridges that we had, you had constituents or taxpayers asking.
Yeah.
And then I also, I got a email this morning. From, uh, Thanks Bush, he used to be a. County Road Superintendent, he works for Wellmore, where we've done the domed arches before. And I'm gonna talk to him and see if that would be a, uh. Less than I would say, not be as expensive as a job, you know, as a whole bridge, see where it falls in there, if we have somebody else put it in there for us. Still be an alternative to.
Go a bridge.
To the bridge and still service the needs that we have. And then when I get that, those things, I'll get that information to you.
Seem like the last one that we done, and we done it ourselves, took a lot of time and a lot of man hours.
That's why I want to see you about having another contractor. Because I was involved in that, we were watering face deep, and it was just a little more than I felt like we. I don't, I don't want to, uh.
You tied us up.
Tied us up for a long time, and it may be, uh, make more sense to have someone else put one, we can be doing other things if we can, if we can fit anything more better. And that's, that's about it, uh. The dust control letters were mailed. This little bit ago, they're out, so everybody's, we made the preparation that Pat wonders too, and she just mailed those. Uh, the Schultz Bridge up there, and I don't know, Pat, let's talk about this now, or you do that later in here. Uh, yeah, let's talk about it. Bridge, uh, fifteen point four is it's described in our road records, but it's. Damage back in May by a sprayer, going driving down the road. Beard and hit the side of the bridge. Uh, Joe Snyder talked with Schwab Eaton, they happen to have somebody in the area, an engineer in the area working on another project and. Uh, stopped by and did a kind of mini bridge inspection. And he didn't notice any damage to the underdecking of the bridge or really the structure of the bridge. Although there was significant damage to the. Rails, the sides, I'm not sure exactly what they're called, and to the wind walls. And so he suggested some repairs and also appreciate them for not building this for that. Um, in response to that, Joe contacted the, the contractor we've used in the past, they've been pleased with. Uh, who came and gave a, uh, a proposal. Um, that proposal has been for thirty days and it expires, we had to get that updated. This past, uh, past week, we had some pretty serious discussions with the insurance adjuster for the. The citizen who hit the bridge and they agreed to, uh. Pay the entire cost of, of the repair, which has been estimated, so. Uh, they have proposed. Release agreement there. Uh, covers all damages personally, obviously, the county doesn't have any personally, but it also covers the cost of repair. Um, the procedure would be that you would sign that, I would let them know that you have signed it, and give them a scan copy of it.
Uh, they would send a check and we'd get the check for exchange, uh, original of the. Sign release back to them.
Then we would make a P O after that, correct? And we get that.
Yes.
For the, yeah. For the, uh, contractor to.
Yeah, yes, we could, we could either make the payment. Directly through them or they can be done as reimbursement, I guess.
I'm saying, so on the insurance on the bridge, do we make the payment directly through the contractor that's gonna do the work or do we make a P O? The insurance company.
Yeah, well, I think the insurance company, definitely the insurance company here is going to make the check payable to Assis County and a little deposit. It's just a question of whether we put that in a. Separate fund and pay it from that or whether it goes in the road bridge and has a reimbursement.
Um, I think typically we've always put it into the department as reimbursement and we just make sure that it's all paid appropriately.
Okay, so when that happens, that doesn't deplete his budget expenditures, right? Okay, that's where.
So we could probably put that right in like special bridge.
Yeah. Cause you know, that could penalize you if you had a large bridge payment there, then it would cut your budget by that.
Right, no.
You'd have the cash, but you wouldn't have the.
So that would be.
I just didn't know there being future correspondence would be better for him or.
Correct, that, that would be fine.
Okay.
What was that?
I was just asking on the claimant, cause there's only one signature, if it could be you, if there's future correspondence, you're already authorized versus one of us, but.
Whatever you guys.
Alright, so, um. I would look for a motion to approve the release of all medical and bodily injury claims, um. At Jackson County, Kansas, in the amount of thirty-three thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, um, based on. All the information, uh, Mr. Henderson provided, there's a packet here if you guys wanna look at the photos, I know it was emailed to us.
Yeah, I saw it emailed.
Okay, um, the claimant, there's one signature required, do you have a preference of the chair or Joe, I mean?
There's the authorized Joe, I guess.
Okay, so I look for a motion authorize Joe to sign the release of all medical and bodily injury claims, um, as presented.
Awesome.
Okay, it's been moved to second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero. Think one thing to note, um. For the public, just so they know, if, if they. As we talked this morning, that this could shrink a bit, the width of a guardrail. However, the bridge was not damaged, so we don't need to replace the bridge. And this is the most cost effective way to safely prevent people from getting hurt.
That's right, from the wall, if the wall does fall off, the guardrail is still there to, to serve the purpose.
Yeah, so just so people understand why we're making that, that call, um, after.
It's just a relatively low travel road.
It's a township road, I mean, straight north of Lancaster, it's, it's gonna be just like any other township road. There'll probably be some people complaining about it and others won't say any, I mean, to be quite honest.
And the pictures are a lot of visibility though, it's like.
Yeah, it comes downhill and it's, there should be this.
Did you have anything else for us? I.
No.
Wanted to say thank you to you and Emily for that binder, um, you guys keeping. Record of everyone that calls you with a concern and how it's been remedied, this is great for commissioners to see.
I miss a few, they're really, really good. I just call and have it done and sometimes I don't. Uh, write it down, but I caught myself yesterday and did it, but we work hard to try, we still have a lot, uh, to be honest here. That aren't done yet, but, uh, we're doing the best we can.
Yeah, but.
The easy fixes we get done as soon as possible.
Yeah, and it's just nice to have it all documented, so when we get asked, we know, you know, I was like, oh. They mentioned that to me, but it's been taken care of, like, it's just, it's, it's a great paper trail and appreciated very much.
Yeah, I haven't read it yet, I knew, I know what it is, so. I can't remember, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, we try to, we try to get them all wrote down and do the best we can to get them.
Um, the other thing we were gonna talk about was, we did receive a couple anonymous feedback. Um, the commissioners did, um. Regarding the, um, code red used for road closures in construction. Um, I know we talked about it a little bit this morning with you of the pros and the cons, because it's definitely been appreciated by people. To know ahead of time, hey, this road's gonna be closed, I'm gonna take a detour, but then also. Uh, understanding that maybe people outside of that general area are still being notified. So didn't know if we can shrink maybe the geographic area or, or what the thought is and. And how to make, I mean, I know we can't make everybody happy, but how do we try to adjust?
Earlier, we weren't big enough, we were getting a lot of complaints. That it wasn't big enough, so we increased it. And so my question is, were these complaints just this week with right here in town?
These two were.
Yeah.
I didn't say specifically, but I'm assuming.
Care about the anonymous as much, but I did have one person call me, here that got it, he lives in town.
Right, so.
So.
Well, and that was confusing to me when Commissioner Reva said he got it and knowing where he lives versus where the work was, it's like, mm, yeah, I don't know. So.
I don't know, I mean.
And you got it and you're way, uh, I mean, you're on the other side of town too.
But I was fine with getting it, just because I go that way sometimes.
Well, I think they can go through to, uh, the code red signup. And you can only sign yourself up for storm related, cause I don't get. Cause we had, a while back, we had concerns and, and things about what code red should be used for. And I know personally, I went in and only get, uh, storm damage. Uh, uh.
Storm updates.
Updates or warnings, and so I don't get road closures and stuff on my personal.
And it's like you that asked about, like we did Rollins two seventy-eighth of Logan. And then had it separate from two seventy-fourth from Rollins to Phillips. If we include that all into one, and then we go. If we, if we didn't get there, it was closed and it shouldn't have been closed.
No, I understand.
You know, so there's, we're never, it's never gonna be at a point where it's gonna be perfect. If you would like for me to shrink, we can for a little bit, but if we start getting a lot of phone calls about it's not big enough. And maybe more in a rural area, we need to be bigger and we can shrink it when we're closer to that.
So I think these complaints were that they were getting multiple calls a day.
Well, and that's when we changed from road to road to road.
And what happened to me, my wife and I were down at the lake, and so we had, my phone goes up two times, her phone goes up. But when you're, I think you're on a point that when you're closer to town.
Maybe we can shrink it a little bit.
So, so the solution I see from listening to all of this would be if we could have the instructions, maybe. Maybe Wes has the instructions on code red on doing what you did, and then. This is anonymous, so whoever sent this to us needs to reach out to us, so we know who they are, and then we could send them the instructions on how to only get the storm warnings. So they don't have to get up out of their, their, you know, to answer a, a road closure. If they don't care about road closures. Let's give them a solution to only do the storms, so they never get bothered again, like, and, and that's the solution, I think. Cause we're not gonna find a one size fits all and you're right, we change the way we're doing it and people are gonna be frustrated that. There's a road closed, nobody told me, like, you know, and then they're late for work or, or whatever the thing is, so I think we try to handle these maybe on a case by case.
If we, we talked earlier, so.
That way, we try, I mean, we're giving this person, whoever's concerned and even though we had two, they were within thirty minutes of each other, so could be the same household or. Someone that's.
They had, they had one sent, did you get that message back or maybe just us?
So how they.
We had one person asked to be removed.
To ask a question for you, it's not a mailman. Okay, can we, or can you send a, uh. Just email only or whatever on code red out with this instruction saying, maybe on, hang on, once a year basis and. Update your preferences.
Make sure that's something acceptable we can do, um, so I will find out. Um, so, what, what they do, so emergency alerts is when there's an emergency, so like we send a code red out. Or sorry, when we send code red out, code reds out for road bridge, it's always a general alert. We also send our burn bands and all that out as, as general alerts, so that way people don't want those. A new unchecked marked box that says general alert, um, that's still usually John for emergency alerts, so say we ever have. Some type of MGP release, so hopefully never happens again, we're not an emergency alert. And then you have storm alerts also, which are the separate checkmark, so all they have to do if they don't want general alerts is to go out to the website. Put in their information again, unchecked mark that box and they should not get that. And this, I print this from our website, so I clicked on the code red link and this is what's there.
Okay, so that's under the code red link.
Yep.
Alright, awesome. Well, hopefully whoever submitted this to us. Is listening and can go to our website, to the code red link, and then under the alert types. You'll see emergency notifications, general notifications is the one you want to uncheck. And then that should not bother you with road closures anymore, so.
I typically tell people unless they're in a flash flood area to uncheck flash flood warning, cause. You get that ahead of time when it's not an emergency alert, same with winter advisory, I tell people, they send up a winter weather advisories. Five days ahead of time, you don't need to be waking up at three o'clock in the morning for winter weather advisory. Read it five days ahead of time, so.
Okay, so when I come to our website and click code red. Then on the left, no, right here, just that one.
So that takes you where do you actually sign up and you can A, create an account or B, um, not create one, and I just. And then I continue, and that is what I print up here, just.
Okay. So then if I historically signed up, this is where I wanna go to find me.
In your information, so even though you didn't create an account before, you can still type in your name and your address and all that, and it's gonna match your information with what's already in the database and it'll change.
I just wanted to do it so I can explain.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay, so you don't even have to find yourself, you put your information in and then you adjust what you're showing me, those alerts.
Correct.
And then hit save and verify information and it'll be updated.
Correct.
That's easy enough, awesome. Well, we'll just, I think we should just do that.
You don't change yours, the, it'll be up to the individuals to tailor their, what they want.
And those who are not computer savvy or whatever, they can call our office and we'll, they'll walk them through.
Yeah, and any of us should be able to help them now.
So before they, so typically when they don't make their circle big enough, um, for something that they're doing. Because you have to cover the road that you're on and what feeds into that road, I got lots of phone calls when they don't make their circle big enough, because they weren't important. They had to go around and they were late to whatever they were going to, so.
So we.
Prefer them not to shrink what they're doing, that, I can see what they're doing and they're not, we're not circling the whole map for one rub. Here, I mean, they're, we're trying to keep it to, to where the feeders and, and everything about getting way out there.
Yeah.
So, and he, and he works with us really well, cause he talked to us earlier today, maybe you guys need to make it a little bit bigger and we did. And we've worked, we worked together really well, so.
I agree.
So I think we found a solution for our anonymous feedback, if they can do that on their own or get ahold of someone and we'll help them.
Well, it sounds like it's more than just the anonymous, because you've been getting calls on the same thing or. And, and yeah.
Just finding that happy medium to where it works, cause we're never ever gonna make everybody happy, yeah, so.
The road.
Well, hopefully that's making it happier, but.
I think it is.
But.
Can you put those in, can you kind of reiterate that on our, or on our social media, just like, pay for anyone that doesn't want, you know? That way that post is there for the count, thank you.
Thank you, Wes.
Thanks.
Okay, so I can file those. Alright, so now we wanna do, which one did you wanna do first?
Let's do, uh. Which parameters? Uh. We mark.
In minutes, is that right? That's what.
Yeah, I'll move the board of county commissioners recessed executive session. At eleven twenty-five AM to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel, is allowed by K S A. Seventy-five dash four three one nine B one, and that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And that the board come out of the executive session in fifteen minutes, uh, in the E O C. One zero four four three U S highway fifty-nine, and those present will be the three commissioners, uh, Joe Snyder, Mark. Zeltner and Dirty Moore, and that's, that's it.
Okay, so. Been moved to second and all those in favor say aye. Aye, pass is three just here. Okay, we are back in open session and have an attorney client, correct?
Yes.
And he would, that.
Well, we mark us and. I'll get a text.
Okay.
Yes, in the motion.
How long?
Uh, when do you get us?
We only have twenty minutes.
So, twenty minutes?
Yep. Sorry, I'm just trying to keep this on.
Alright, I'll.
Yeah, go ahead.
I moved that the board account, excuse me, county commissioners recessed executive session at eleven forty-one. Uh, AM for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship is allowed by K S A. Seventy-five dash four three one nine B two, and that the purpose of the closed session is to protect confidentiality of the discussion. And that the board come out of executive session in twenty minutes. Uh, in the, in the E O C one zero four four three U S highway one, uh, highway fifty-nine, and those present will be. The three commissioners, uh, Mark Zeltner and Pat Henderson.
Okay, I will second, been moved to second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes two to zero.
I mean. I just went on, on that.
Where we could really help out store tubes, you know, things like. Well, we'd only be blocked.
So, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. We are back in open session, uh, Marcus Zilton, finance director, uh, we were moving you, sorry. Did we coordinate with Lindsay for one o'clock? Okay, did anyone hear from Ryan?
No.
Okay.
I think three people reached out.
Nobody's responded. Okay, I hope he's okay. Um.
Pat, did you, uh, develop a letter or?
Thank you. Yep.
Or, area agency on aging, yeah.
Right, how many of those are, there's. You wanna read?
Yeah, um, I'll, I'll give a little bit of background first. I'm on the area agency on aging, uh, board in Hyawatha, which services. Uh, I believe seven counties, uh, in northeast Kansas, uh, they've. They're in the process of building a facility there and applied for and been awarded a C D B G grant in the amount of six hundred thousand dollars. And, um, through, part of this is that, uh, since they are in Brown County, bro. The Brown County Commissioners are the pass-through, uh, agency and, uh, I was just hoping that we could have a. Uh, letter of, uh, uh. Uh, yeah, a letter of support, uh, from Atkinson County to, to encourage them, um. To, uh, go ahead and, uh, prove the, uh, the receipt of the C D B G and I will read the letter. We reviewed the grants announced by the Kansas State Develop Department of Commerce through the two thousand twenty-three community. Development Block Grant Program. We were pleased that you were awarded a grant to act as a conduit for the benefit of the northeast Kansas. Area Agency on Aging. This grant in the amount of six hundred thousand is only one of twenty-four awarded through the C D B G. This grant in the amount of six hundred thousand is only one of twenty-four awarded through the C D B G program this for the year. The Northeast Kansas Area Agency on Aging serves seven counties in the region, including Brown and Atchison County. Acceptance of the grant places no burden on the taxpayer served by the area agency on aging in the seven counties. These much-needed funds, uh, federal funds will assist in construction of a much-needed. Multi-use facility, this facility will allow the agency to better meet the needs of seniors in our area. This is a complete win for the citizens of the region, and we appreciate your willingness to seek outside funds. For the benefit of our citizens, especially when it comes. Without liability to the Board of County Commissioners. We applaud your forward-thinking approach on behalf of the citizens served by Northeast Kansas Area Agency on Aging. So I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, approve and sign this support letter.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Passes three to zero, that is awesome.
Thank you very much.
Good for Brown County.
And I would take that.
Be scanned in first and then.
Yeah, I guess it should be. I will need it. I'll be back in town later. Because I'll need it by Monday. Why don't we do that, that way I won't forget it?
The next executive session. Yeah, I can have him scan it in for me.
That's great. That is very good.
Yeah, that sounded great, a much more what you were wanting. It's just interesting how many those grants, like that's what they're going to is this county being the conduit for them. Which is great, so we know what's happening, you know, in the. Awesome, thank you.
It's more accountability, it's.
Okay, so, um. Thank you, Pat, for updating the Atchison Senior Village Letter approval for Lindsay Woods. Um, as she serves as our administrator of the county-owned facility. Um, Atchison Senior Village under temporary licensure from K D A X, please accept this letter. As documentation under K A R twenty-six dash thirty-eight dash six. That a current licensee is not available to serve as administrator in our facility. And it is in the best interest of Atchison Senior Village for Lindsay Wood to continue as temporary administrator record. Lindsay has passed her state exam and was granted a temporary license as nursing home administrator. She is making progress on the completion of other requirements for full licensure. David Mercier continues to serve as her preceptor under the agreement with the county. And her first temporary license will expire August thirteenth of twenty twenty-three, thank you for your assistance in this matter. Sincerely, Casey Quinn, Chair of, Chair of Board of County Commissioners. Um, do I have a motion to allow me to sign this letter, um, to Karen Torber at the health occupations credentially?
So move, say.
Okay, the movement seconded, all those in favor say aye. I pass this three to zero, we can give this to Lindsay. And she will remain on her way to getting her administrator license. Mark, do you want to go ahead and? Oh, we, we, sorry, Lindsay's coming at one, right? Okay, so do you have any updates, Pat, other than what we've already went through?
Your email that you just sent, did you want to update? I was on that.
I can.
This, uh, email that you just sent here about the, uh, joint communications.
Yeah, so I was revising the twenty-five budget calendar. Um, and in a previous one. There was an indication that the city and the county would need to meet. To. Go over the budget. If that's something that we're still going to do in twenty-five.
Well, it seemed like that would drop off now.
And that's what I thought, but I I didn't, I didn't.
Yeah, we never bet anyway, we sent our department heads to do all the work. And so I think it's just less for them to have to.
We we made a couple of times about it, but it's already kind of prepared and presented for that.
Well, and then.
May seventeen, oh, okay. You guys' history runs way deeper than mine. Uh, so we have the treasure scheduled at twelve thirty. So we have twenty minutes. Did you guys have a chance to look, I know that the sheriff had a conflict when we. And his email to us. I mean, any questions or concerns over. It's pretty straightforward. After we gave instructions.
So we talked about, um, observe that it talks about your balance from inmate revenue twenty-two.
Yeah.
Twenty-four.
So why is that? He. What was your question?
But he references money in twenty-two.
So he had extra revenue that offset his expenses in twenty-two because of those things.
I see.
So he was able to take that income and roll it over into the reserve.
I got you, those federal inmates and things like that, okay.
And I think he was saying in there that he's anticipating not to have as many of those point four.
Right.
Which I know I've asked you this before, but. And I think I asked during Corey's, because he had the same thing. When when had had a discussion with him about his budget, it's just like, I think it's. Not noticed how much revenue like those departments bring into the county, and so. What happens to that revenue, so?
Sort of offset your expenses.
Right, but not during our budget, because we're only looking at expenses.
Right, but and you can't. You, it's an anticipation, you don't know how much is going to come in. Can try to budget for. Some amount of revenue, but you don't really know. Whatever does come in, some of it is reimbursable to expenses, some of it is not. Um, if you spend an expense. And you get money back after that expense, then it's reimbursable. But if you're, if you just get money in, new money rather. Um, that may not be reimbursable.
So do they stay with the departments, the revenues? And is that how?
Can go and offset your expenses, so that's, that may be how a department has extra money left over in their budget. To transfer it into the reserve.
The other ones have money coming in. Probably the amount would be. Uh, share the jail and the. EMS and then, uh. No deeds gets. This element is really heavy.
And emergency management has their grant.
Those are grants, yeah, but, uh.
To offset their expenses.
I mean, solid waste, they get a little bit, they were getting a little bit of fees, but not now, so. Can you predict the trends pretty much on the revenue stream though?
A good average over the last several years, you can.
Think a three-year rolling average, I use your trend line. Don't kill yourself, that would be nice to see that, but not now.
Yeah, that's what I was kind of trying to understand is like, when the revenue comes in. Then it stays with the department, so that's how Corey was able to do like his. Reserve fund for the ambulance that he wanted to keep at least, yes, okay, so that's where that's coming from. Any additional revenue, his revenue is offsetting his expenses, but any additional can go into that for that.
Right, and there's a state statute that allows for that.
And that's the same with Jack of. When it offsets. Then it can go into.
Right, and if he doesn't have enough to offset, he's been worried about another department in county general having to carry that burden. So. I know he said it to me before, that he tries to make sure that there's enough revenue to offset the expenses so that that doesn't happen.
Yeah, it'd be easy to vet years, say pull some money out of the next year's lien year. Subsidize it.
Right.
Well, and.
So just sort of distract that balance, what's the right number, right is key.
All the, like, what we saw last year with the few that went over of the unknown. For Corey and for Sherry and for Jack, I mean. So I I was just. Trying to remember how those revenues, like if they went to something specific or just right back to that department.
So if the H back unit. That he was budgeting for. First plan was saying could fail, did that, was that, is it the best spell? The way it's represented, I thought it must be. Maybe that's part of the reserve.
Maybe, yeah.
Yes, the assumption. Well, I'm going to, it's in the budget, I'm interested in covering that, I didn't want to look at.
Right. Absolutely.
That maybe is a consideration out of reserve. That's not a cheap unit. They're nine six thousand dollars.
I think that was.
One of the fellows on top of the office.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Never, sorry, I got backwards. No, his budgets up a little, mostly because of the money that was withheld before, but back in, sorry.
So it shows a bigger increase on this. You know, when you go from zero to a large number, it's a, it's a bigger increase than.
Right.
Steve said he's hitting with consumer oil, cost going to go down on fuel, so is that separate from what, I mean. Is he done fuel contracts or or?
That might have been come from me asking him. Because I thought he could get a better deal, so I asked him to reach out, um, to consumer, because like Groton Bridge does it for EMS. Um, and they work on the contract, and so I was trying to find areas of other people's budgets of like, hey, what if you contract your fuel? You know, it could be cheaper, so, uh, he said he would look into that, so sorry, Eric, that might be because of me.
Okay, well, uh, you know, I was just curious what, if that was just something that rang a bell, but we had discussed it. I couldn't remember if he was actually doing it or or how that's.
It's the current health insurance down.
I'm not a hundred percent sure. I don't. I don't know, I have not looked into the shares.
It's zero percent change.
But that might be something that we need to address, Jody and I. With the people. It's all the held plan. Let's see if that. Is added, but the number can.
Well, he's also mentioned getting fully staffed, so.
Right.
If you would be fully staffed, would even have a big impact on the end of the year versus if you went. If you were at. Eighty percent. Or a big portion of the year.
Yeah, no, you're fine, you're fine, we just wanted to visit with you about, uh. Like the court for you this morning. Nothing more hold you to, just trying to get a, a handle on. Hey, any other questions? Alright, Brian, we're just gonna pull yours up. Apple outlet, uh, was one thing that stuck out to me. Um, there's nothing in there.
We took the twenty away. Come back, yeah.
And then.
Right.
I don't know, I wasn't here when you did your budget initially.
I don't think that everything back, so. It's achieved, yeah.
Yeah, so do you need, you need it in there? Or is that something that?
Well, so I was gonna ask, um. What's on a twenty twenty-four, because we have forty thousand and create or forty thousand for maintenance and repairs. And. What, what's wrong?
Turn this up.
I thought you were doing that at my questions.
That's a retro.
Why is the forty in there?
Well, so I just. First of all, I guess it's probably easier to start with your current project of the treasure and.
The treasure should be wrapping up and. The end of this week, so furniture's tomorrow. Well, hopefully that will be, uh, a decision on how, when we can get, uh, computers and all that hooked up on. As far as the move, but the actual stuff will wrap up this week.
Okay, so. Figure it's are done in August, appraiser.
Fraser, I think they say carpet was still until, uh, the fifteenth. Of August, so if we get carpet down and, uh. Maybe. I don't know what, uh, timeline, probably. First for September, second week or first week of September, let's say.
And once you wrap those two projects up, what's next? And I know you're dealing with the lighting strike.
We'll have to figure that out, but one of my major projects that I've skipped over that was on Joe's list, so. That's been a while, is that bathroom, we we need to address the bathroom.
The main bathroom?
First, we were handicap accessible.
Yeah, and we've got a lot of the. Uh, stuff bought already for that, other than, uh, like.
So what are you gonna do?
Uh, it needs to be, the stool needs to be replaced and reset, it's crooked in there, so it's, uh. Not set right, and then we're gonna pull that back wall, insulate and put a better, uh, vent fan in there.
Okay, will that be soundproofed?
I will, I hope so, yes.
Okay, um. Didn't, I was thinking that the previous, uh, maintenance said that this stool needed to be turned to make room for handicap accessibility. Didn't, I was thinking that the previous, uh, maintenance said that this stool needed to be turned to make room for handicap accessibility.
Well, if they did, they turned it into the wall, so it's not right. It, it needs, it, it may have needed to be scooted over a little bit.
Okay.
Which can be done, but either ways, it's, it's sitting into the wall, so it's not ADA standard right now.
Okay, but it can, you can do that.
We'll be there.
Yeah.
We'll be, everything will be. Right with that. I'm hoping to move it out about four inches to help with that soundproofing.
Okay, so that's a priority because of.
If you've ever, to me, if you've ever walked through the courthouse, uh, the odor, the noise is a big thing too, but. It's just one of those things where the walls look really bad in there. They're rotten out.
It's pretty busy too, I think, isn't it?
Yeah, it's people.
And I know it seems like it's just something to upgrade the looks of it. But it's, it's more about the sound and the ventilation of it. The ventilation, I can't believe we've got a bathroom that isn't vented. So it does have a bin in there, but it's running to nothing. It's just sucking it back around.
And it's ADA compliant too.
Yes.
That's, that's part of the.
Yeah.
Have you got a place to run that bit pipe?
We will have. It'll come down through to the basement and then out. We will make it to the bin.
Okay. And how long do you think that project like?
Uh, I would say for sure that one is, uh, three weeks.
And is that?
It will be usable. Except for about three days. So we'll keep it up to where they can use it, but three days of that, they'll. They'll have to walk in without.
And you have that in the twenty twenty three budget?
Yes. Yes, we've just been rolling it over.
And then. Uh, have you, I know you've looked at the courts area. Is that next?
That would be the next one. That and then those windows on the list we're doing. Just as soon as we can get some time to spread out. Hopefully before October, the windows get back.
Well, when you say painted, will you do the same thing you did in that course upstairs, uh, Sutley's old office? Where you like redid the trim and.
I won't do the inside so much. It's the outside, but as I come through each office and I'll come back and retype them up. Yeah, soundproof. It's not gonna be soundproof. It's just gonna be a sound barrier.
Is there anything further with the, before you bring downstairs?
No, then, but that. That, that, that just keeps going on to the back burner, but for employees, that's probably pretty important. I keep putting it off because I help consider it as important. That's the other things. But it, it ought to be. Get that. Which, considering doing the bathroom first and break room second and then starting the court stuff. That would be fun. Yeah, that would be fine. We just don't wanna run into bad weather on the outside.
Do you have a budget? Yeah, for the windows, probably wanna do those. If you can do the project inside, even if it's winter.
Yeah, the break room would be winter project.
Do we have budget for the porch?
Well, so that was another question. Do you have budget for your break room in twenty twenty three?
If, if that's the part of the forty, yeah, that's why we're asking for more there. So. To. Where you're seeing us going up to the, uh, maintenance parts when up, right?
Uh, so you had forty. Yeah, so, so in your forty, you have for twenty twenty three, you can accomplish break room.
Not seeing what.
Building maintenance.
Maintenance and repairs.
Oh, there it is.
Okay.
Save a page by halfway down.
And then we've also got, which wasn't, so when we're looking at things that weren't expected. Uh, the, the drain now still. So addressing that is something that I didn't have in there, but. We'll try to figure out how much it costs and that's gonna be it. What's the best way? What's that?
Temporary fixes.
Yeah, it is temporarily fixed right now.
And that's coming in through the wall down there. It's just, just from that.
Right, yeah. That will be something that I'll figure out. But we'll see what. Goes with this elevator too, you know. Hopefully there's nothing that is gonna be completely on as.
So it sounds like with those projects, I mean, that probably would get you to twenty four thirty. I mean, that's a lot.
Yeah.
Treasure, phaser, bathroom.
And that's boring, nothing happens.
Windows, break room, drain. Okay, so. For courts. That was one of the things we met with Priya this morning on the courts budget. And she doesn't have anything allocated in her capital outlay, um. And we had ARPA allocated for courthouse renovations. Uh, but we haven't had those discussions yet until we know, like if your budget. Is able to take care of all of those things you just said, then. We can talk about. What the courts estimated, like. If you, if there's any way you can work with her to get her some.
Oh, some number?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Because that's kind of where we're is like. Al- allocating from that pot of courthouse renovations to.
Well, also, what, what is the scope of it? Cause I think at one time they were talking about completely taking the. Rearranging everything up there and their bathrooms, and I wouldn't be for that.
This morning, she just talked about moving all of her people into the one office and then bulletproof glass for the.
So why don't we get a few ideas going and I will, uh, then we can, then we can start to get prices, cause if we don't have the picture. We're not gonna do it again, you know, say, well, that might cost and then change.
Yeah, well, another thing that they, uh, I thought maybe would be low hanging fruit was the, the safety, like the, uh, putting in the door. Uh, that's head of the stairs to where the judges chambers are there and get a fog system on a, and a door. And that would be something that would. Probably kind of independent of other projects that could be done.
Glad.
Quickly.
Glad you said that, cause once you guys are working on doors and bobs with a courthouse. Do you have an estimate of what?
Three thousand dollars.
And how many are higher?
I don't have that number, but I do know it's about three thousand.
So Senior Village gave us that estimate of about three a door, but then if we ordered eleven or more, it was like twenty one hundred dollars a door.
And the same kind of thing, you know, if we go all at once, we get a little cheaper.
And I feel like that's what we should do.
Yeah.
Even if we don't do every door at once, if we ordered all the locks and all the equipment and had it sitting there, I paid to God, then. We can wait for the doors as we go.
Yeah, so that would be another number we want to, we want to know. Glad you mentioned that. Okay, so back to your budget then for twenty twenty four. Forty and twenty five, so forty thousand maintenance and repairs. That'll just kind of be your.
Yeah.
Standard bucket to operate from and then. When you give estimates to people, folks like the courts, then we can work out if she puts it in our capital outlay or for utilizing ARPA funds or however. All of that shake that, but. Just need the information.
Yeah, you show his office too, they were, uh, right above there. They were all talking about stuff, so. Trying to, you know, get a big picture, cause that might affect.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, and also the attorney was going to help with that project. For the courts, so just having some figures and timelines to know.
This is more, it's probably be a three year project, maybe that long, it's new, it faces, you know, whatever.
It, it can be, any of these projects can go a lot faster. The problem is, money makes things go faster. So, you know, it's like when the courts open.
So you know, candy makes things go faster. So, yeah, I mean, if we're gonna spend more money, we're gonna get it faster. If we brought in more contractors. Uh, not to say that.
So, just so you know, you're the leader and we're leaning on you for telling us that, because I. Keep saying in every conversation I'm ever in, when they're like, call Brian, I need to ask Brian, I need to call Brian. And I'm like, oh gosh, Brian is. You are amazing, but you're one person. So like, you, we're looking at you to say, I can handle X, Y, and Z, and I need some help with this, so.
That's where I need a timeline, you know, if somebody says, this has to be done, like right now, I know that that treasure has to be done on Wednesday. Because Thursdays, we're bringing. That's, and if I get that, then I can either say to you. I can't do that no more challenge. I'm not fine enough.
It works very fast, it's a presidential order.
You know, things can happen bad, but at the same time, you don't want your quality to drop.
I did have a concern about the tiles, cause when I was in there, they weren't stuck down all the way. And you could take your, you could feel the edge. Are they gonna stick down or?
I have been in contact with Home Depot on the premium glue that they sent me. And, uh, the floor guy is not happy with the glue and, uh. But it's one of them things where you can go back and forth. I can talk to Home Depot, they'll say what's probably the underlayment. You know, anything to keep it from them. Uh, what I'm gonna say and what the floor guy has said to me, it will stay down and it will go down. So he has come back in and addressed a few of them problems. He wanted to leave it lay until Wednesday night and see if it was going. But it will be down.
Okay, cause, uh, I sure wouldn't want it to be a tripping hazard.
Yeah, absolutely. I don't want it to be pulling out maintenance hazards. To where I always gotta go in there, so he says it'll be down. I'll take his word or he'll be back every day to. Fix every tile that comes up. But yeah, we, we. He did pull a few and reblew them and they haven't moved. So I'm happy with them, but hopefully the others will get.
Okay, this, I figured you were aware of it, just observation.
The very next morning. And so was he.
You need more inspectors on your job sites.
What? Anything, you, you never, you know, it never offends me to hear those things, because sometimes I do miss things, but the former handed me. Yeah, um.
He's very easy to work, but I'm hiring Mr. General Contractor and anything.
We are glad to hear that.
There'll be a couple hundred thousand here.
Do you guys have any other questions for Brian?
No, no.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Hey, next up, Monty Ellerman, how do you try to bear budget? Your space is looking great. Exciting. We are so ready to be back up there too, so.
So did your computers get zapped or?
I had one that had a, um. That worked hard, but they were able to get that taken care of over the, over down for a day. And then they were able to get that back up. I had one phone call out, so. Um, Wes was kind of thinking maybe since we were in the basement and they have done some improvements down there. That maybe that's kind of what saved us from having more damage.
Yeah. Brian had made the comment to me that the offices that had been kind of went through already and had the upgraded wiring, didn't have the. Um, the problems that untouched offices and receptacles had had, so. Just, it's believable then.
And I think once, if, I thought it happened after we got back up to the new office, I think it still would have been in the same boat. Because we were getting all new wiring, of course, I think we would have been okay.
Yeah.
Because we were. Before we moved downstairs, we were blowing, we were tripping breakers and. Needed done. So sadly, mother nature agreed, but.
Yeah, I think that's a good point when we have people talk about redoing the offices, you know, it's not just for making them look pretty. You know, it's.
The building's a hundred and twenty five years old.
Yeah.
You know, when.
Safety concerns and.
When my office was built. Cars as we know it, you know, there were inventors sitting in Europe that were coming up with three wheeled carts. That had a little tiny engine that ran off of white gas, you know? That was what was happening at that time. They weren't thinking they were gonna have to register every vehicle in the county, you know, through that one office and have.
Well, probably at the last upgrade probably was pre-computer. I mean, you know, when they put the paneling on the walls and all of that, so. No receptacles for computers, no receptive.
I saw a picture on Historical Society, they were smoking on the counter. And there was paneling on the walls, so I mean, that gives you an idea of like paneling's been there for some time.
You just sell tanks for horses back in those days. Alright, so anybody else, Connie, we can squeeze this down.
You know, I looked at it and Mark and I talked about it and I don't really feel that there is, um. I have just a teeny tiny little bit of wiggle room with the motor vehicle fund, but that is all contingent upon the number of transactions we do. And it's not, I mean, it's not a, uh. There's not an influx of money there either. You know, we're all kind of in the same boat. The Kansas County Treasures Association has tried multiple years to get a. Flat fee bill passed. It will not pass. Um, they just cannot get it. Get any traction on it. We, every year we think it's gonna get some traction and then it doesn't. And that would. Help us as a county out. It would also help the customer out, because everything would just be. Wouldn't be all these multiple things and therefore, where's all my money going? It would just be a flat ten dollar fee and. Would be very straightforward and transparent and. It's not. So there's not, there's a little bit of wiggle room there, but not a lot.
So your health insurance is like a twenty percent increase. Was that because of the anticipated rates?
Yeah.
At some point.
But you, you're thinking that's gonna be, right, Jody, that the health insurance is not gonna see a huge increase?
No, the ones that you have put in should be five minutes.
So there would be some room there that's just much, um.
So when, would you be updated numbers on that? That would change a little bit.
I, I, I think it should stay how it is, because, well, she has. Full staff.
That's what's, there's a number of points.
Yeah.
And I need to always change that, cause I, I mean, I know of my insured, my insured employees now. But if I have stat changed, then that, you know, could possibly change. So that's something you don't ever wanna. Say, that's something you don't wanna make contention from the person. Um, I know you guys have reached out, you know, at one point about the advertising, but that's all. You know, statute driven also and. As we know, we don't have any idea of predicting how many people are gonna be on the delinquent tax. Notice, I try to get that newspaper ad sheer down to the bare minimum. That's what I've been working on the last week. I just sent it to the. Uh, to Sandra at the news press and I try to make it absolutely as agreeable as possible, but still meeting the. The guidelines publication.
So I'm just staying on top of that every year. Have tax, so you keep hammering. It seems like the, sooner it's got smaller the last couple of cycles.
The tax sale has.
The taxes.
Yeah, the delinquent, um. I'm, I'm still the same size as I was last year.
Changed size then at all?
No, but there'll be people, I mean, that's, that's why it's published, you know, there'll be a few people that see it and come in and realize there's an issue and. It just, that's what brings awareness to. It might be something as simple as a D change or something that's happened or, you know, uh, error. It needs to be corrected occasionally gets found in that ad, so it's a good thing, but. He hasn't given me the quote yet, but it's probably gonna be around six thousand. He hasn't given me the quote yet, but it's probably gonna be around six thousand sixty-five hundred dollars, so. And then I have to publish something on personal property as well, so.
What is your contraction?
Um.
Then I mean, what?
That's for the, for the, um. Publication, there's a little bit of publication cost in there also. And then also for the printing of the tax statements.
Great, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You do your NRP something too. What's that? I don't know. I thought, I thought there was something you set out about NRP.
Yeah.
Do you have any other questions or? Do you have any other questions? I think we're good. Thanks for coming out.
Please give us something.
I know, I know. Cause I even thought that too, the health insurance, but that's one of those kinds of like. You have fifteen minutes, so our next session, so. Did you have any other?
No.
Updates, okay.
See, we have another executive session.
At one o'clock, attorney client. Lindsay.
Oh. That's, that's not that noise there. No, I don't.
I bet their furnace is, it's internal, so it's probably coming during, probably a little.
Does sound like.
I had one of my basement, my other house.
Like a little some.
Yes.
Cause I have one of them.
Yeah.
It does it too.
Yeah.
When it gets that level.
We're ready for you guys to be back up there, so that means we're upstairs and.
Yeah, I'll be ready to get back in our. Our office.
Space, yeah. Give it back to you.
We'll get kicked out again.
Hmm?
Do we get kicked out again?
Yeah.
For courts.
When the courts, yeah.
Court down there one day, you know?
Don't suggest there.
What are they gonna, what's their plan with the elevator being down for?
I don't know. I guess the chairlift, temporary chairlift on the stairs. Those companies that do that are pretty good.
Yeah.
Piggyback rides on the stairs.
You're back in that line.
I've got a bad.
We tried to post it well for people to call. I know they come in, take your guys' office.
Yeah, we call you, you call us and.
That's been. And the customers are absolutely grateful for that. And we have a few, you know, cause sometimes there are a few people that don't wanna get on an elevator. Yeah. Especially in an older building like ours, they assume that it's an old elevator, like, you know, down there at the state Capitol or something.
I don't think it's a good alternative, but. Yeah, they were outside, could they come in the basic steps and we used to be fewer steps there.
I would, we've had a few people that we've said we can go out that way, um, but I even hesitate that way because they're. They're adequate for someone who is mobile. But I would be worried for someone who wasn't.
I don't know if that's for public consumption basically, or if we, but. But it would be a lot fewer steps. That's the only thing. Especially if somebody. Could park there and just come right over there.
Yeah, yeah. And I mean, if somebody was, you know, somewhat ambulant, worry, but that's the problem with those staffs, that they're not the best, you know?
Yeah.
They're fine for all of us, but if you.
They're. Yeah, this definitely would be a different standard if they built them steps now, because they. I think people with big feet would just not be able to, can't already step, cause the steps are physically small.
Yeah, they're only, the risers are, are actually more, it's more difficult to walk on them, in my opinion, because they're. They're such a slight riser, so it's almost. I double step on sometimes, yeah.
Kind of doing.
Cause they're. They're very deep, but they're, the risers are something like that, so.
So, I don't know how you get it before, when you're actually moving, how, can they move up like half of your offices? They can be.
What we did before was we would just move one staff person at a time. So they would move one person. So there was basically only one person that was.
Just down.
Yeah. No.
Cool.
And this will actually be, other than computers or whatever, it'll actually be easier because they can go ahead and get our printers all moved up. We'll keep one printer downstairs, you know, and. I think moving upstairs to be different.
It might be easier to get you to help.
Because we don't have what?
An elevator.
Yeah, cause I, you know what? I had never been in that elevator until we moved downstairs and I was, I was putting stuff on the, on chairs and actually like. Bringing the chairs and the chairs and.
Was it going?
Is it only? And so, um, I never, I then I realized that I've never been on this elevator. Push button is the basement. So then I put a new thing, new directory, cause people were like, what's the main floor? Cause I think the main floor is like a star or something. Isn't that right? Yeah.
But we was, oh, oh, it's oh, oh, one with a star and then two.
Yeah. So we would have people come back into our office and go, which is one from the main level. So then I put a little cheat sheet on it for them. And now they don't need it. That's right. We'll have to. The heaviest thing is those printers.
You're gonna have a little back spray right before that starts, you know?
Yep. The thing we have. Other people can do that, right?
A little simple.
Thanks for changing. Appreciate you being able to pivot. It's just easier when. People travel out here to knock him out instead of make him leave and come back in an hour.
Okay, it's, uh, fifteen minutes?
I would say half an hour.
Okay.
But that's just.
Well.
Um, Lindsay, three commissioners, Jody Moore and Pat. And under.
Attorney client.
Attorney client. Hey, I will move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at. Well, fifty-three, uh, PM for consultation with an attorney with the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. As allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine B two, and that the purpose of the closed session. Is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion and the board come out of the executive session in thirty minutes. In the EOC one zero four four three US Highway fifty-nine. And those will, present will be the three commissioners, uh. Lindsay Wood, Jody Moore, Mark Selner and Pat. Uh, Anderson.
So.
Okay, so I moved in second and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I pass this three to zero. Do we need anymore?
No, I got it.
Okay.
Yes, uh, she needs the, the letter.
Do you need that to be scanned in?
Uh, I don't.
Okay. Um, maybe if you can, Wes, make a copy and bring it back in here and we'll put one in the folder and she can make one.
You can, you can just scan it.
Okay.
We'll scan it for you and you need, do you wanna attend just to. You know, he'll, he'll just, he'll just email it to me, just tell him that Kaylee needs it.
Okay, so.
And then you can keep the original.
Approval of expenses. Do I have a motion to approve the expenses in terms of?
So move second.
So move in a second and all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I pass three to zero. Any public comment? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move second.
Okay, then moved in second and all those in favor, say aye.
Alright.
I passes three to zero. We are adjourned. One twenty-four.